I'd like to call the May 18th regular board meeting to order. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to thank you all for attending our meeting tonight. We have a lot of recognitions. This is always an exciting part of the year. We just finished, I think, 27 graduations. At least, it seemed like that. But it was really nice to see our students, and it's always nice to see them here to be recognized for the special things that they do. So, parents, we welcome you and other guests who are here tonight. We'll remind the audience that we do tape our board meetings, so if you only want the back of your head to show, then don't turn around and look at the camera, because then we will know who you are. But just a reminder that we do tape our meetings, and they are available for the public to view on through our website, I believe. Janice, you can log on and view those meetings. Our first order of business is to adopt our agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
I vote to adopt the agenda as presented this evening.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Very well, the agenda is adopted. And we began with our recognitions and presentations. Our first recognition tonight is for the Missouri Fine Arts Academy. And Lee Summit R7 School District students recently selected to attend the Missouri Fine Arts Academy are Afton Schumate, Lee Summit High School, Miranda Chafin, Lee Summit North High School, Amanda Schilling, Lee Summit West High School. The Missouri Fine Arts Academy is a unique three-week residential summer program for exceptional Missouris artists who have completed their sophomore or junior year of high school. Initiated in 1996, the program offers students the opportunity to enhance their skills in such fields as dance, visual arts, theater, and music while participating in a stimulating series of interdisciplinary co-curricular activities. Students are nominated by their high schools to attend the academy. This year's Fine Arts Academy will be held this summer on the campus of Missouri State University in Springfield. It is funded through program fees, grants, endowments, scholarships, and private donations. So if those students would please come forward. Oh, yes, we, I almost forgot. Could we have the parents of these students please stand too, so we can recognize you? The R7 Board of Education expresses its appreciation to our physical education teachers and coaches, and is grateful for the important work that they do for our students, to ensure our students are healthy and active today and throughout their lives. We are recognizing this special day during the meeting tonight with Steve Taylor, Secondary Physical Education Department Chair, representing all employees, and this is National Physical Education and Sports Day. Okay, this is a Duke University Talent Search Grand Recognition. Carol Mulder and JoJo O., both 7th graders at Summit Lakes Middle School, recently earned grand recognition in the Duke University Talent Search. Students recognized through this program represent the most academically talented 7th graders in the United States. The Duke Talent Search Program identifies students who have scored in the 95th percentile on a grade-level achievement test. As a part of the national program, these academically talented students take above-level college entrance exams, SASTs or ACTs, to learn more about their abilities. Approximately 60,000 students take these exams. The Duke University hosts annual recognition ceremonies to honor the 7th graders who score the highest on these exams. The state recognition ceremonies honor 7th graders who have earned scores equal to or better than half of the college-bound seniors taking the same tests. The grand recognition ceremony honors 7th graders who have earned scores equal to or better than 90% of the college-bound seniors taking the tests. In addition to the above-level testing experience, Duke Talent Search participants receive educational materials and resources through 10th grade to help them develop to their full academic potential. Based on ACT or SAT scores, students may qualify to participate in Duke's Summer Studies or E-Studies program. Parents, please, would you stand as well? As one looks back over their ACT and SAT scores, I'm sure some of us are overwhelmed by your accomplishment. I was. Lee Summit Lakes Middle School's Cyber Patriot National Championships Middle School Division. Team Error 37, made up of six students from Summit Lakes Middle School, captured the national championship in the Air Force Association's ninth season of Cyber Patriot National Youth Cyber Defense Competition. The competition was held in Baltimore, Maryland on April 3rd. Team members are Tommy Cozy, Mason Thype, Jonathan Ludiker, Ethan McFarland, Keenan Kirk, Connor Bixel. The team is coached by Terry Kirk and technical coach Kevin Schulmeister, with additional training on Cisco and networking provided by Lisa Euler. Of the 600 teams that started the season, Error 37 was one of the three middle school teams to advance to Nationals. They completed over 40 hours of intense training in the weeks prior to the competition. Their score on the networking challenge ranked third overall, surpassing 10 high school teams as well as the other two middle school teams. The team showed excellent teamwork and outstanding sportsmanship during the competition, representing the excellence of LSR 7 District. We are extremely proud of their achievement and are excited for the future of the Cyber Patriot Program in Lee Summit. Parents, would you please stand if you are here? While they're here, we would like to know at the board, DAS, what Error 37 is. Oh, pretty much like what happens to me all the time.
Happens one, not 37.
Thank you, guys, that's great. This is National School Nurses Day. The R7 Board of Education is grateful to our valuable R7 Health Services Department staff members and appreciate their commitment to supporting the health and well-being of each student. National School Nurses Day was celebrated on May 10th this year. Terry Hanson, the district's Health Services Coordinator, will be representing employees in this area at the meeting tonight. National Teacher Appreciation Week. Board of Education expresses its appreciation to our outstanding teachers with the sincere thanks for their positive impact on our students. During National Teacher Appreciation Week, celebrated May 8th through 12th, we joined our entire community in celebrating our educators' valuable impact on our district's children and our future. We will briefly recognize this special week tonight with Brad Rackers, R7 Teacher of the Year, representing all teachers.
It's such an honor to be chosen as the Teacher of the Year, but it's probably more of an honor to work in this school district. It's an amazing place to work, not only for the students that we have, but also for these amazing people who work up here. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the school board for their support of all teachers in this district, also all the people who work over here, the superintendent, obviously. Thank you for your guidance throughout this year. Just thank you to everybody who allows us to do what we do on a daily basis, because teaching is a passion. I have wanted to be a teacher since I was little. I was talking to Phyllis Blagnette earlier. We know, when you want to be a teacher, you know that's what you want to be. There's nothing else that you could be, because you have to inspire other people to be great, and teaching is the only job that teaches everybody else to be what they want to be. So I think we're so thankful for the opportunities that we're given here. I'm thankful for the opportunities that I'm provided at Lee Summit West, where I worked with Dr. Sharp, and just some amazing faculty that I get to work with on a daily basis. But on behalf of all the teachers of the school district, thank you so much for recognizing the work that we do, and thank you for supporting us.
This portion of our meeting is comments from the public. Linda, do we have anyone tonight?
Not tonight.
Thank you. So we move on to the next part of our agenda, the superintendent's report. And as some of you have already surmised, this might be a good time. Not that that has anything to do with Dr. Benson's report, which I'm sure is enthralling.
I won't take it personally.
Really should stick around for the finance report, it's even better.
It is wonderful to have great students and their parents here participating with our Board of Education and District Office Administration. Brad, thank you for your comments. It's great to have everybody here. Superintendent's report for May 2017. The graduations did occur, as previously mentioned. We had 1,314 fine young people cross the stage. Congratulations to the graduates, the staff, the faculty, and the families. Monday, May 22nd is the last day of school. We had two makeup days, one winter in clement weather and one a storm cleanup, power outage day, so we made it through in pretty good shape. And the last day is Monday, May 22nd. KC Scholars, KC Scholars is a new scholarship and savings match program, recently announced its first-ever scholarships, 77% of whom are first-generation college students. A total of 27 of the 608 metro-area scholarship recipients were LSR 7 students. So congratulations to those students. It's a fine program, and I hope that it is able to continue. Under parent and community involvement, we had our comprehensive school planning team meeting, which is a community-based meeting, which works on our strategic plan, Destination 2021. The areas covered by our strategic plan include governance, student performance, high-quality staff, facilities, support, and instructional resources, and parent and community involvement. We gave progress updates for the year's work, an overview of the plan in its entirety, as well as soliciting input from the committee and the committee's patron base for any changes. And you will see those come to you, Dr. Daniels, at a future meeting. Very good. Would call the community's attention to Nutrition Services, which is offering a no-cost summer meal program, thanks to a federally-funded grant coordinated by the LSR 7 Nutrition Services Department. Several hundred of our children and teenage students will have the opportunity for breakfast and lunch over some of the weeks of the summer. This program is at Meadow Lane Elementary and Westview Elementary. Finally, under governance, the 2017 Legislative Session adjourned May 12th. I understand there is a special session being called for a limited topic. I want to thank our local legislators who voted for the following that passed: full funding for the Foundation Formula, a restoration of $29 million in transportation funding, and for the passage of the Missouri Human Rights Act. Other items were not passed and appear to be dead for this session. We will produce a scorecard for the community on our legislators' positions on critical issues of importance to the school district. That's what I have to do.
Now we will move to the finance portion of our agenda, so we will listen to a report from the Finance Committee. Whoops, wait a minute. I'm sorry, I missed, I missed one. We have a new part of our agenda that we've added from this meeting forward, where we will hear board reports and meetings attended from our board members. I might let you all know in the audience that our board members are all assigned a variety of committees across a wide spectrum of things that deal with the school district, everything from sitting on the Tax Increment Financing Group to participating in the C-SIP. So as we move forward, since the committee have not been officially assigned, we will not actually have a report tonight in this portion of our meeting. But from here forward, each of our board members who attends committee meetings or has another committee that they report on or does something in relation to their duties as a board member will report during this timeframe on those things for both the board to hear and for our public to hear what's going on with the Board of Education. So with that, then, we will move to the Finance Committee Report, which is next.
Finance Committee met yesterday. Investments through April total approximately $132.6 million. Revenue and expense reports. Operating revenues are higher than the prior year due to additional local and state receipts and the receipt of federal funds earlier in the fiscal year. Expense percentages are within expected budget parameters. MIC Change Order Number Nine. Change Order Nine includes 11 items involving a variety of changes within the building. Largest items included in the change order are due to an added electrical panel to accommodate furniture modifications, ceiling modifications, and the addition of steel toe kicks to the second floor railings to prevent safety concerns. Change order amount will be charged against existing construction contract allowances resulting in no net increase to the individual contract amounts. MIC HVAC Commissioning. Contract with Sistech is recommended for commissioning work. District utilizes commissioning to optimize the integration and testing of building systems using an independent third party. Criteria used to evaluate proposals included appropriate staffing and experience, clear explanation of testing processes, 10-month warranty check, training for district staff, and overall lowest average fee rates. MIC Signage Contract. Contract with KC Sign Express is recommended for interior and exterior signs at the facility. Summit Lakes Middle School Structural Evaluation. Cracking and movement of exterior and interior masonry walls adjacent to the band and choir rooms has occurred over the past year. In September 2016, the movement was severe enough to compromise support of the roof joists in the choir room. Temporary steel framing is providing support while investigation continues to pinpoint the cause. At this time, DLR Group is being recommended as the structural engineer to design a repair solution. Administration continues work with the insurance carrier to determine any applicable coverage. Summit Lakes Sewer Easement. An easement is recommended, granting the city of Lee Summit access to the property on the east side of SLMS site for construction of a sanitary sewer or future potential development in the area. No cost will be incurred by the district if the sewer is constructed. Any disruption to R7 property will be repaired, back to its original condition, and the easement documents have been reviewed by R7 Legal. Complete Health and Wellness Center Plan documents. To provide continuity of administration of the complete health and wellness center, legal counsel is recommending a planned document be approved detailing services and benefits. Employee Assistance Program Contract. Contract with Empatia is recommended, following a competitive bidding process for employee assistance program services beginning on July 1, 2017. Recommendation follows a thorough evaluation interview process, reference check, and comparison of service delivery. Implementation activities, including communication to all staff, is planned following board action. Page one of nine, complete. Kidding, it's only a half-page left. Depository Services. A bidding process was recently completed for banking services beginning on July 1, 2017. Two banks submitted proposals and were evaluated using the criteria provided in the RFP. Administration is recommending the Board of Education approve the depository agreement with Central Bank of the Midwest, which provided the best overall proposal based on an analysis of the net interest earnings, less additional costs incurred by the district for staff time and travel or banking purposes. Fee Changes For the 17-18 School Year. Administration continues to review fees paid by R7 families for various purposes. For the 2017-18 school year, is recommended that the Chromebook fee be decreased from $30 to $25, the $10 middle and high school activity/programming fee be eliminated, and the high school parking permit fee be decreased from $25 to $10. Fees for students qualifying for free and reduced lunches will also have lowered fees for the Chromebook from $15 to $12. Chromebook and parking permit fee changes will have no impact on the district operational budget. Elimination of the activity/programming fee is projected to increase the operation budget by approximately $86,320 to provide resources to the middle and high schools to continue funding the programs and services currently available to students. I hope you all enjoyed that as much as I did. I have two motions for the board this evening. Motion 6.02, I've moved to approve the transfer of $1,298,430.13 from the general fund to the special revenue fund.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to move some funds from the general fund to the special revenue fund. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Oppose? Very well, motion carries.
President, I also move to approve the Treasury Report and the payment of the bills.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Treasury Report and the payment of the bills. Is there any discussion on that? I think there would be. Very comprehensive report, Adam. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Oppose? Motion carries. The next portion of our agenda is our consent agenda, and Robert's Rules of Orders allow for organizations to develop a consent agenda of items that are routine in nature that traditionally happen pretty much on a regular basis. Therefore, information is sent out ahead of time for board members to look at, and all of these items have been looked over very carefully by our board and have been vetted through our administrative staff. Also, some of these items are discussed in our workshops, which have been occurring pretty regularly before each board meeting. We usually meet somewhere between four and five prior to the board's meeting to work on these items. These are open meetings, you're all welcome to attend, and at those meetings, we usually have a lot of the discussion that we have prior to bringing these items to the board for a vote in our open meeting. These are not voting meetings, these are discussion workshops where all of the details of these items are usually worked out. Many of these items are brought to us two and three months ahead of time, so we have an opportunity to look at them, ask questions, and move on from there. So with that, I will accept a motion on our consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Julie?
I just wanted to know if we had a week for ribbon cutting for the MIC. I see things will be done mid-July, so do we have such a time?
Any others? Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Oppose? Very well, motion carries. Our items for decision, and on this part of our agenda, these are new contracts that we approved that are over $5,000. These, again, have been presented to the board. They come through our Finance Committee sometimes a month ahead, so that people have an ample opportunity to look at these and ask questions about them, so the board members have all seen all of this information. So our first one, whoops, I did not mean to do that. Item 8.01, or 8.02.
Well...
Well, these are consents.
These are consents.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I was confused, because we didn't have that one item in there that you did tell me about. This is a second consent agenda, again, these are items that we have all seen ahead of time, and these are all contracts that require the board to approve them, they're over $5,000. These are contracts that have not yet been executed.
I move that the board approve new contracts over $5,000 as presented in consent agenda's items, 8.01 through 8.0, going all the way down to 8.18 as presented this evening.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions about anything that's on this agenda item? Julie?
I just wanted to know, who takes the CPI training?
We have all certified staff and all special education staff that interact with students that may have to assist students or manage students physically. They have to go through that training in order for us to be in compliance with our board policy related to isolation and restraint. And so there's an initial training for staff, and then there's a recertification training that happens annually.
And then my other question is, I asked if we had a count, or do we know a number who uses the EAP services? I don't need a count, but you know, is there, do we get a...
This past year, the information that we received from our current provider, there's a various number of different types of categories of services that are provided. So one-to-one counseling services, we had 103 of our covered individuals that have participated in that. We had six employees who were referred by their supervisor or human resources. We had 300... Um, we had a three hundred and twenty-two individuals attend a training session throughout the year. There were, um, twenty-nine individuals who took, um, advantage of the crisis intervention, um, services that were provided. And then we had, um, thirty-five participate in team coaching.
Awesome. I think it's a great service, I just wanna make sure we're using that.
We are, and I, I would just also say that, um, with our wellbeing coordinator that's been on board for several months, uh, we are really working comprehensively to put together a long-range plan for wellness activities for our staff, and we'll, uh, really planning to utilize the resources that are available from, uh, Empathia to help us further wellbeing for our employees.
Awesome, thank you.
Um, I wanted to comment on, um, item eight point one three advancement via individual determination, just for information for people who may be watching this, um, uh, online. Um, first of all, I wanted to say I'm very pleased to see that proposal for a college readiness program for our students, especially those students who are in the B to D range, who have the desire to go to college and the willingness to work hard. Um, I guess my question was, Dr. Andrews, how did this proposal come to your attention?
This is something that we began looking at actually four years ago. Um, went on some visits with the high school principals, evaluated where it was at, and it's really just been over the last three years that we have restructured some funding, became available to help staff within those buildings, um, et cetera, and just were ready to move forward. And Avid is really designed to specifically support first-generation college families. Um, many of our families have been to college in Lee Summit, have that support at home, but we have a significant group that has not. So Avid is really designed to support those, and then we're really excited about beginning to bring it in and, and phase it into our programs.
Right?
Got one more.
Okay.
Sorry, um, eight, item eight point one six, the ma- math workshop training. Um, when I was reading about that in our packet, it said, um, you know, most people probably don't realize that this is a continuation of a previous training for our kindergarten through our sixth grade, uh, teachers, and the contract is for work that'll be completed in June, and it'll allow teachers an opportunity to receive training in the summer and avoid disruptions to instruction by not needing to have a substitute in the classroom. I'm just very much in favor of keeping teachers in the classroom and avoiding disruptions to their instructional time. So hopefully, this will be very beneficial to our teachers and our students, and ultimately help us to raise our math scores in the future.
Is that right?
Sure, absolutely, I can share with you that, um, what this training does, it provides, uh, common teacher knowledge about a framework that can be utilized for math instruction, and then helps, um, helps teachers to encourage our and facilitate our students to be critical thinkers and think like and believe in themselves as mathematicians. And, um, through our first round of training, one thing that we heard from our teachers is that they would prefer an option to, for summer training, so they were ready to roll on that first day with students. So, um, always, you know, appreciate our willingness for our teachers to do that during the summer. It's very high-quality professional.
Do you have any other, uh, comments or questions on the consent agenda? Okay, as we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well, okay, motion carries. The items for decision, uh, items nine oh one through nine oh three, the first of which is to approve fee changes for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year.
As presented to the board, administration is recommending some, uh, reduction in fees this year, uh, the elimination of one ten-dollar fee for activities at the middle and high school. There was a reduction, uh, uh, for the Chromebook fees of, uh, five dollars, and then a reduction in parking for those senior high students who drive to our, uh, comprehensive senior highs, uh, that fee will be reduced from twenty-five to ten. So, uh, we are, uh, as an administration, pleased to recommend to the board fee reductions and, uh, make those, uh, announcements, uh, we'll, we'll get those announcements out, uh, after board approval.
Okay, can I, uh, have a motion, please?
I move that the board approves new contracts over five.
Whoops.
He resolved that the Board of Education approve the fee changes for the twenty seventeen eighteen school year as presented.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second, are there any discussion items? Uh, and if board members could remember to push their little buttons, because if you're at the other end of the table, I, I don't know what you want to talk. Okay, Julie?
I, I'm just really excited about this one, I. For a high school kid to save twenty-five dollars, I'm just really excited. And these people up here and all of you worked on this, and it really makes me happy. It's like a coupon.
I would, just a, just as a comment, um, uh, Dr. Gates, if you could share with the audience, the Chromebook fees, what those go for, if you wouldn't mind?
The Chromebook fees pay for the accidental damage coverage. And under our current lease that we have with Dell, accidental damage, um, per child is one accident per year, so that cost goes directly into a fund, and that helps offset that accidental damage coverage that we buy on the devices. On the second accidental damage, um, if the student has one in the fiscal year, they are charged fifty dollars for that, even if the damage was a whole new device. So for example, um, we've had a little bit of everything, um, but if they would, um, pull off and it was on top of a car, and it tumbles down the road, um, and it's totally lost, then that fifty dollars would cover them getting a, a, a different device.
And is a portion of that, uh, current thirty-dollar fee used for upgrades, replacements, uh, other items that are, uh, with regard to the Chromebook, it's not just the insurance?
It, it would be the additional parts that we would have to buy for those devices. Um, all of our techs are trained, so we do all of the work in-house, but it would be the parts that go into those devices. And, um, in addition, going forward next year, it will also, um, pay for the cost of loaners, so when a student damages their device, they need a loner device. And so there are carts of loaners in each school, and that, that cost is in there as well.
Thank you. Uh, I know there were some questions from the public about what the fee was for, and, uh, I think that's helpful.
Well, if it pleases the board, I think, uh, it's important for our community to understand, the fee reduction on Chromebooks is partially, uh, made available because of the outstanding job our, our students and families, uh, are doing in handling the Chromebooks. Uh, and, uh, we're pleased to pass that savings on, uh, in the form of a fee reduction. And of course, that'll have to be looked at, uh, but I think that, uh, our students and our families should be commended for how they're handling this, uh, district property.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Any other comments or questions on this, uh, agenda item? We have a motion in a second, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Very well, motion carries. The next item, point nine point zero two, building use requests.
Administration recommends, uh, approval of the LSHS stepping out studio request for facility usage pursuant to our board policy.
I will entertain a motion, please.
Move that the, uh, Board of Education grants stepping out the studio's request to use the Lee Summit High School PAC in dressing rooms, band room, and choir room on June second, third, and fourth for a year-end showcase at a pro- a cost of approximately three thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on this motion?
I do need abstain from this vote.
Thank you. Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention. Okay, the personnel report, the next item.
At this time, I would entertain any questions that the board might have regarding the personnel report, and I might add that, uh, any Board of Education approval, I would have two, uh, recognitions.
Okay, I would entertain a motion on the personnel report, please.
I move to approve the personnel transaction as presented in, in contracts issued.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve personnel transactions as presented and contracts issued. Is there any discussion on this item? Being none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Hey, Dr. Miller, you have an introduction to make there, too.
Absolutely, uh, first and foremost, appreciate the board's support, uh, each month on the personnel report. It's always my pleasure to introduce, uh, young, talented, uh, administrators who are coming into new positions in the district, uh, in no particular order, but, uh, I know both of these folks extremely well. Uh, first and foremost is Kendra Burke. Uh, Kendra's back there in the back, she's, uh, currently a special education teacher at Lee Summit West High School. She's gonna be transitioning into a coordinator of special services district-wide. Uh, Kendra was a, a member of our Leadership Academy. Uh, I could tell you, uh, it has a tremendous, uh, skill set in the special education. I know if Emily Miller was here, she would, uh, reiterate that. Uh, I happen to know her husband pretty well, too, Ryan's, uh, I believe, a teacher at Meadow Lane Elementary, and then, uh, is it Bailey and Calvin?
My daughter Bailey and my son Calvin.
Absolutely, so, uh, tremendous family that works for our district. And so Kendra, we're excited, congratulations. And then, uh, next is, uh, at Lee Summit High School, Shane Ringen is currently a business teacher there, I could tell you, um, has a family history of leadership in schools, and, uh, this young man was also in the Leadership Academy a few years ago. Uh, he is gonna be the new administrative intern at Lee Summit High School. If you remember, the board was supportive of adding those positions. Uh, and, uh, when James Euler, last month, moved into the, uh, full-time assistant principal role, that was vacated because Tracy Bertanson transitioned over to the athletic director, uh, and, uh, of course, because Chad Herzog moved into principal at Lee Summit West High School. But, uh, Shane is a, a very intelligent student, Senator. Uh, this is, uh, another future leader in, in our, uh, district, so pay close attention to both of these folks, I'm extremely proud, so welcome and congratulations to both of you. Thank you.
We have a, uh, report tonight, uh, a presentation on our federal programs annual report.
Thank you so much, hopefully you can hear me now. Uh, I'm here to talk to you tonight about, uh, federal title programs. I'll be speaking briefly about Title One A, Title One D, Title Two A, and Title Three, uh, again, briefly tonight. Um, the first slide I want to share with you is about Title One A. Uh, the dollars are driven by local poverty rates. In other words, free and reduced lunch rates are the key driver to the funding here. That doesn't mean that the funding only goes to students in need, because we don't know who our free and reduced lunch students are. Um, but we do help the students in these specific schools, Great Beginnings, Early Childhood Center, Lee Summit Elementary, Meadow Lane, Westview, and we're actually adding Prairie View Elementary, uh, thanks to the leadership of Dr. Collier and Mrs. Fennelwald and other players on our, our, on our planning team. Uh, we're excited about that addition next year, uh, which is a little bit of a side note, but relevant, there is a much more detailed report in, in the packet tonight. Linda, thank you for putting that in there. But it is important to understand that as our demographics change some, uh, we do see pockets of growth of free and reduced lunch rate growth in some attendance boundaries within our district, so that's important to know. Uh, and again, the dollar, the dollars that are budgeted are in the more detailed written report that is attached tonight. Title One D is driven by the number of youth in local institutions. Uh, dollars are currently going to Hilltop Academy and Summit Ridge Academy, for a paraprofessional and a social worker respectively. Title Two A, this is about improving teacher quality, about improving principal quality, and about improvement in instructional practices, and the big targets here are staff development and curriculum development. Going too fast, let me know, I'll keep plowing through. Title Three is our ELL, or Limited English Proficiency and Immigrant Program. The dollars are driven by students who have these, um, characteristics identified and by enrollment numbers. We currently have ELL programs at Highland Park Elementary, Pleasant Lee Elementary, Prairie View Elementary, Pleasant Lee Middle School, and Lee Summit High School. And again, the, the details of the numbers are in that written report. One of the other requirements with federal title dollars is that we are expected to collaborate with non-public entities, specifically non-public schools, private schools. So we may have a student who resides in Lee Summit, but goes to, um, private school outside of our attendance boundary in the district, we are still required to collaborate with that entity and offer, um, an opportunity for some limited funding relative to that. There's, there are a lot of details there that I won't bore you with, but if you have some questions on that, I'd be glad to answer them or get them for you if I don't know. So where are we at moving forward with title, uh, programs? Uh, number one, we will continue to meet as a district planning team. Some of those players are in the room tonight, Dr. Collier, Dr. Hedrick, Dr. Emily Miller, unable to be here tonight, um, Gina Clockingay, Amanda Russell, and I serve as the district, uh, federal title programs planning team. And then, uh, we try to meet on a monthly basis. In addition to that, we bring the principals of the schools represented, uh, to the table to have conversations and collaborate and to plan together. So we'll continue to plan with our building principals, so that we meet our mission over here, we prepare each student for success in life, that is what we show up to do every day, and we will continue to monitor the impact of the November elections, uh, on how that may change funding and how that may change the landscape, in turn affecting Jeff City and Lee Summit, Missouri and other local districts. Um, again, I mentioned this earlier, but I think it's worthy of repeating, as our demographics continue to change slightly, um, there is an increase in free and reduced lunch rates in some attendance boundaries that is worthy of paying attention to, and we all know that students who come from backgrounds of poverty, they need more support and differentiated kind of support, uh, to meet their needs. So, at this point, uh, thank you to the district planning team, of those members I mentioned earlier, appreciate the board's ongoing support, uh, the good questions, and at this point in time, I will open it up, two questions.
Julie?
So I read this report, and I really appreciate the written report, 'cause it really brought my attention to some of these things. So let me go back to, um, you said if they, so let me give you an example. Kid lives in Pleasant Hill, go to, goes to Summit Christian Academy, we still have to help him, is that what I'm understanding?
Actually, no.
Okay, good.
If that student lived in Lee Summit.
Okay.
And then went to a Christian school or private school, pro-girl school in Pleasant Hill, we would have to partner with that school in Pleasant Hill, meet with them, and set forth and motion some conversation.
We're still talking about Lee Summit kids, so.
Yes, we are, absolutely, yes, good question.
Perfect, thank you.
Adam?
Uh, well, I guess just to follow on that, I, I still don't really see what that collaboration supposed to look like, I know a conversation, but we're just partnering with them on a plan for the student, or actually providing funding, just another couple sentences on our role?
Well, technically speaking, we reach out to the non-public entity, and if they want to take advantage of opportunities for funding, for some staff development, again, limited funds, um, they can do that if they choose to. Now, oftentimes- Now oftentimes, they don't. They don't want to go through some of the hoops that are required. They have to develop a specific plan of attack, plan of action. Does that help? Good question, thank you.
Okay, Kevin, thank you very much, appreciate it. Wait, wait, there's one more. Dr. Miller, you head.
Actually, I appreciate that Dr. Davis said something there. Also, I do say, and I approach our board here, may I call one person to the district that I did not recognize?
That I did not recognize, and actually, he's a very important person. So my apologies. She's leaned back now and I can see her. And I've known Kendra Hutzel for several years. Dr. Hedrick, I think I'll let you introduce Kendra.
I am very pleased to do that, Dr. Miller, thank you so much. This is Kendra Hutzel, you've approved her in tonight's agenda. And we are very fortunate and pleased to have her join our staff. I've known Kendra for many years. She is a top-notch Missouri school finance person. She'll be fulfilling the accounting manager, director role in business services. She will provide great knowledge, experience to support our staff, our building principals, our departments, and who support our students. So we are very fortunate to have her and looking forward to her being part of our team in a couple of weeks.
My apologies.
Good catch.
I was notified by several people.
The next portion, the next portion of our agenda are written reports. And generally, what we will do at this time is ask if anyone has any questions or comments on any of the written reports that have been submitted. Kim?
Thank you. Just a couple of things as I was going through those. If any of you know me, you know that I am very much in, have experience in handbook revisions, having done that as an assistant principal at Pleasant Lee Middle School for the middle schools. So I went through these, not necessarily with a fine tooth comb, but in, you know, just a couple of little things. Or 11.01 for early childhood year handbook. Just be sure and make sure that Julie Don is vice president of the board. It still lists Adam Rutherford, so just wanted to make sure you guys caught that. 11.03 on the secondary handbooks. I just wanted to point out in the middle school handbook, I see that blankets should not be brought to class in addition to coats and book bags that were already in the policy. I understand that this has been an issue this year. Who would have thought that we had a blanket epidemic? Yep? Am I right? Whitney Moorhead? Yes. Anyway, I just thought most of you probably didn't know that. The kids were bringing blankets to school. And, yeah. So that's why that's placed in that policy now. And 11.05, early childhood center report. I'd just like to really commend you all on your report. It was very informative and enlightening, thank you for that. And I really appreciate that. It was fun to look at too. I just like to recognize the hard work that goes into all of these handbooks by all of our administrators who work on all of the revisions because I know that this is, you've been working on it and you will continue to be working on it until those handbooks go to press. So thank you very, very much.
Okay, with that, then we will proceed to our roundtable. And I think I will start with our new board members. And I might let everybody know that it is five minutes till eight. And we'll start with Kim. Five minutes till eight.
Okay, it's five minutes late. Okay, I'll keep it quick because I was all prepared to give the Lee Summit Educational Foundation report because, really, real quick, I'm just really excited about, Lee Summit Educational Foundation presented $59,111 for 50 PEAK grants. And PEAK stands for Promoting Excellence in Knowledge. And they will be assisting students in 83 classrooms across this district. And of those 50 PEAK grants, two of them are actually district-wide grants that go for gifted and library media. I was part of the PEAK patrol that went out to award the grants from school to school over a two-day period. And we give them surprise announcements and we award giant checks and balloons, just like the Publishers Clearinghouse sweepstakes. So it's a lot of fun to go all over the district and watch the joy that comes to the teachers' faces as they win those PEAK grants. Some of you have been on that trip before, so you know what I'm talking about. But also, foundation awarded 65 continuing education scholarships totaling $74,550. Lee Summit High School students received 36 scholarships totaling $37,050. Lee Summit North High School received 17 scholarships totaling $20,000. And Lee Summit West High School received 12 scholarships totaling $17,500. And that's my report on LSCF. And I just wanted to say, it was a total honor to be able to go to the graduation ceremonies and be able to hand those diplomas to those graduates and see the excitement on their faces. And just thank you very much for that.
Jackie?
Thank you, Bob. We had a visit to Jefferson City, to the state Capitol, last month, late in April. And Phyllis joined us on that trip, as well as Doctors Benson and Blevins. And we had members of the community advisory committee, as well as business roundtable members. And we visited with the House Majority Floor Leader, Mike Serpoy, as well as representatives Runions, Rayber, Stacy, Cross, Roland, Fauch, and Bratton. We even saw two senators. It was, since it was so late in the session, schedules are really difficult. And we visited directly with Senators Rizzo and our own Senator Kraus here from Lee Summit. And we are definitely looking forward to going back. Some people really enjoyed the opportunity to be in some photographs on the dais. Well, I was there. When you see the Capitol a lot, sometimes you, it isn't as special as folks that don't get to go. In fact, it was great because there were several in the group that had never been to the Capitol. And I thought that was an important opportunity for folks to be there and to begin to have an understanding of the process. And I'm certainly looking forward, in the board capacity, to organizing our 2018 visits. I don't think we'll try to get down there during a special session since the topics aren't related to those that we would be interested in. So, and I would join with Kim's remarks on the pleasure it was to be at the graduations and see so many happy and grateful students who are ready to start on the next steps of their lives.
Dennis?
I'd just like to reiterate what I was always considered. It was an honor to be able to. It was an honor to serve on the, or to be able to be at the three graduate, four graduations. It was, and the honors that those kids got. And I was especially taken by all three nights of the graduation when they recognized those students that were going to attend one of our military, or join the military, go to the armed services, and standing ovation from the public. And not that all the others were not special too, but I really thought that, what a cool community we live in that really recognizes those students who are choosing that path to go. A big hand to the staff and administration from the high schools. That is not an easy job to do, to graduate that many students and to do it so successfully in an auditorium full of people with high school seniors who are ready to get out and get on with their lives. Last night, we got to go to Summit Ridge. And I wish I remembered the young lady's name. It was, oh, it was, but she won a scholarship to go to, I'm going to start crying here. Adam, I get this stuff from you, I guess. But when they announced and surprised that young lady, I'm assuming it was her mother who was sitting there next to her. I mean, it was worth every dime we spend at that school for those kids. So, it's been a busy month. Dare graduations, I got to attend a lot of Dare graduations. Those were very special also. So it's, it's fun to be a part of the Lee Summit R7 family.
Adam?
Also, had a lovely time at the two graduations I was able to attend. I wrote Dr. Sharp a note, he stepped out, but. You're honored by it, I think at first, but you don't realize just how much of an honor and privileges privileges it is to be there onstage, until you have to miss one. And so I had to miss West and Summit Ridge this year for some business travel. And I wrote Dr. Sharp a note and I was really, really upset about it. I was surprised how upset I had to miss those. So I'm glad they both went well. And Government Relations meeting on April 28th, just my only updates there. We were the feature presentation at Government Relations. We had Dr. Blevins, Dr. Benson, and Dr. Carpenter there. And I don't know, did the deck that you all used make it around the board members? Okay, so it's familiar material, but you all would want to know what members of the community and that organization saw. Wonderful presentation about funding legislation. I think Dr. Benson did a great job of kind of articulating our position on a variety of bills, different levels of government. And I think largely, we have support from that group, but not on every single piece. And so to continue to get our message out to that group, I think is very important. I offered to take some members of that group around to some of our facilities. And one did actually take me up on that offer. So thank you, Dr. Blevins and Kyle Gorrell for working with me on that. We've taken Representative Stacy around to three or four stops, I think. And talking about programming and what goes on, it was a facility-centric discussion. But I think what's important for those folks is that we get the message around what's happening with our students in each of these buildings, different programs, and who we support, especially when there's some things up in the air. So anybody who wants to join me, I'll get a date out there for you. And once we get it settled, we can kind of offer that up to a broader group to have a good conversation with them. So that's all I have, thank you.
Phyllis?
Okay, I have several things I'd like to share with my fellow board members and everyone in the audience this evening. Wednesday, my business hosted the Lee Summit Chamber of Commerce's Education Committee. Had the opportunity to invite them in, I do this once a year. It was a great meeting. Lots of things are happening with the Chamber of Commerce and the Education Committee. One of the things that I'd like to throw out now is that mark your calendars now for August the 2nd. That is the new, sorry, Monday, August the 7th. That is the new teacher breakfast. And everyone was asking how many new teachers we believe we'll have. And we really couldn't say exactly, we thought it would be about 130, something like that.
We're still adding to that number.
Yeah, so we're real excited, that's always a great time. And we always feature our winner, our Teacher of the Year, District Teacher of the Year, as the keynote speaker the previous year. So Michelle Updegrove will be the keynote speaker for that particular event. This is my last little Lee Summit Educational Foundation blurb. I've served as the board liaison to that group for about five years now. And I am being reassigned to Team Lee Summit, which I'm really excited to work on with Julie. So I am passing that Lee Summit Educational Foundation baton to the wonderful Ms. Kim Fritchie, who gave a great report tonight. So I'm really excited for you. I will be staying on the advisory board for my business. And I do enjoy being a part of Tasty Lee Summit and the Race for the Future. And my business is always a Friends of the Foundation sponsor each and every year. I serve on the Health and Wellness Team, which meets about once to twice yearly. We had a meeting last week, Dr. Flack and Dr. Miller did a wonderful job, Emily Miller, with that meeting. We talked about the health and wellbeing of the students and how to communicate that message even further to our parents, to the community, getting everybody on board for health and wellbeing of our students here in the R7. And they've got some great plans ahead. And it looks like we'll be meeting again in September. And it was really fun to be on that because I am someone that sort of is healthy and wellbeing most of the time, I think. Anyway, I have to tell you something fun I got to do, because I work with Partners in Education. I'm not a building sponsor because I do not have the time to do that. But I also am an in-kind sponsor. So if the district building needs a spelling bee judge, that's me. If they need somebody to teach hip-hop in the middle schools, that's my business. So got an interesting call from Laura Maxwell about a month ago. Lee Summit Elementary was wanting a tap teacher, tap dance. So Laura passed this on to me and I said, oh my goodness, I would love to do that. Because for those of you that know me, know tap, Kendra knows back there, tap is really my thing. I love tap dancing. So I went in to about 60 of Lee Summit Elementary's honor choirs kids. And they called me the Tap Dance Lady. They didn't know my name, it was okay. And I tap danced for them and it was so much fun. And then, I got them all up and we learned a whole tap dance because they were getting ready that Sunday to go see 42nd Street. And it's all tap dancing. It was one of the highlights of my experiences this year. It was so much fun. And the boys were doing it more than the girls were doing it. So I thought that was really, really cool. Also, I just want to say, welcome to the three new board members. You all have added so much already to this dais up here and I'm really appreciative. I enjoyed being with Jackie and Jeff City. I've known Dennis forever, this guy can dance really well. And Kim and I grew up together, so it's really a treat to share this with you. And you've already really done a great job, thank you. And then on a personal note, two things I want to throw out. My grandson, whoever gets him in high school on their baseball team, is going to have a winning team. At eight years old, for his first baseball game, he was, he had eight RBIs. And he was awarded, I did, I counted. And he was the most valuable player and got the baseball. So, and I think he'll be at Lee Summit North, is what it looks like, so anyway.
Maybe we can move on to the Royals real quick here.
So that was fun. And then my dance recital, as you know, is June 3rd and the 4th. It's my 28th season. It seems like yesterday, I heard somebody say, don't blink, or it seems like, you know, it goes by so fast. And 28 years and loving it. And it's at Lee Summit High School. And we've been in the district 26 out of the 28 years. First year, we were at John Knox, second year, we were at Raytown South High School. And then after that, we've been in Lee Summit. And we appreciate all of the support that we get from the building services and everything. So that's my report tonight.
Julie?
All right, Lee Summit cares hat, our word of the month is appreciation. And I ask a lot of questions, not just up here. So I just want you all to know how much I appreciate the answers that I get. With that, it kind of looks like Lee Summit cares may be losing 40% of their budget next year because of federal funding. So with that being said, make sure you buy your tickets to Got Talent. Look, I'm heartstrings, I'm trying to pull on them. June 10th, at Lee Summit High School at 7:00 PM. And we are going to feature Mr. Bronco, Mr. Tiger. Now, Mr. Titan has a baseball game, so we're going to find Mr. Congeniality there at West or something. So they're going to be featured, so it'll be kind of fun. And I think I told you last month about the launch, a couple moms that have going to be college freshman girls. And they're doing a, yeah, packing party, modeling, how to, they're trying to make it fun. And how to decorate your dorm and maybe some safety advice too. So that's kind of fun. And, what? Oh yeah, from Ochsah. So they came to Lee Summit cares because it's kind of under our umbrella. So that's kind of a neat thing to do. And then, yes, graduation was amazing. And I put this on Twitter and Facebook because I wanted everyone to know how cool our graduates are. And I'm picky. You all know how picky I am. And I will know when I don't get a thank you. And I got a thank you every time I gave that diploma and shook that head, every time. So that was pretty cool. And that is my. And that is my report.
Dr. Benson?
Welcome to our new administrative leadership group and to our new board members.
Well, I have just a few comments. First of all, a trivia question for those in the audience. Trivia question is, which board member is the only board member who is black and gold but not a tiger? I did not go to Lee Summit High School, contrary to popular belief. I went to Shiny Mission West, which is black and gold, but we were the Vikings, not the Tigers. So just in case anyone ever asks, which board member was not a Lee Summit Tiger, you now know.
So if you are a Lee Summit High School graduate, stand up.
Stand up.
Well, they let you graduate.
They let you graduate.
That, I want to echo Phyllis's comment about welcoming our new board members. I feel like we are ready to move our district forward very positively. We have an excellent group of people up here who have tremendous skills with regard to education, government, business, all kinds of different things, and I think that is going to be a very positive thing for the schools as a whole. So I'm looking forward personally to working with everyone. We've already had some excellent sessions, and I think they'll only get better. I would echo also comments about graduation. And as a former assistant principal who was charged with standing out there in the audience during graduations, I get a little nervous when we go to graduations, but these were super great. They were done extraordinarily well. My hat is off to all of the staff and the principals and administrators who worked with our graduates. They were fantastic. And it's amazing to see how, what a well-oiled machine that is and how much the kids appreciate that. So again, my hat is off to all those people, and we are thrilled to be able to have our graduation ceremonies in the Community of Christ facility. It's a beautiful facility, but it's getting very full. Lee Summit West was 530, 524 graduates, that's a lot, plus all of their relatives. So it was a full night, the last one. But again, Summit Ridge's graduation, it's phenomenal. My roots initially are back in, at risk, and to see those kids and to see the opportunity that they've had and how they've latched on to it in many cases, and in some cases, been drug screaming and kicking right up there to get their diploma, it's great. We are doing something that many school districts just simply don't do. It's a lot easier for them to shove that kid out the door and say, "See you later, hope your life goes fine." We don't do that. So I'm very proud of that, and it's always a treat to go to that graduation and see those kids and see what they're able to do. So is there any other business to come before this board? Hearing none, we are adjourned.